Okay, so it seems like we have a steady number, so we'll get started now and let people in as we go along. So, welcome everybody to our new town hall that we're going to talk about. Our January plan for youth comp and a little bit of February as well. So, on the call today, you might know our friendly little faces. I'm Caitlin Mallon, I'm the indoor program, indoor youth, oh my goodness, can't talk today. I am the youth competitions indoor programs coordinator. I deal with all the four on four to 15 year teams. We have Mark Wiersma, who's the indoor programs lead. Carrie Campbell, who is the indoor programs manager. Alicia Liddams, who's the director of competitions. And then, as well, I see some friendly faces. Joanne Lewicich, executive director and others. So, we're just going to get started with Carrie is going to start the slide first. And we are going to go through a presentation and we are going to ask questions all at the end. If you have any questions, please put them in the chat box. I'll be monitoring them and putting them on a word document so we can ask the questions at the end for everybody during the video. Alright, so with that, I will pass it along to Carrie.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for taking some time out of your Monday evening to join us. So, let's get started. So, like I said, welcome. It's a little agenda of what we're going to talk about today. The current status of our indoor competitions, our calendar changes for the January. That might be updated, I'm not 100% sure. Our programming for TNS to 16U. We'll touch on what's going to be happening with our four on four to six, six on six programming and our 17 and 18U and kind of just go over the changes. Do talk about some volleyball candidate testing that's available and going over what's next and then we'll enter in some questions and answers. So, as we all know, things are rapidly changing again in just a few short months. So, we were quite positive with the opening of permits and stuff like that, but we again are seeing some stalling with the boards and such. As of right now, we do account for high school gyms and school gyms do account for 90% of our permits for youth competitions. And with them not happening, obviously, we're in a bit of a pickle. The school boards are slowly opening up, but not fast enough to roll into our traditional season for January. Approved permits that have been happening in school boards across the province often has limitations of them such as equipment, number of hours per week, restricting number of participants and types of activities. And only allowing single team training or two team training, so no tournaments, you know, nothing over so many hours. We were looking at a traditional season in January from what we have booked. We are short 50 plus venues for January and that's obviously because of our non-school permits. And even if school boards do open up come the new year, we have to work with a reduced timeframe that school boards would be administering permits. So, Chris, our winter break closes from January, December 17th to January 2nd. And really, that doesn't give us a lot of time to plan for tournaments for 800 plus teams for January, so. That's the kind of, that's what we're looking at for indoor competitions right now, so we're very, very limited. And this is just a continuation of what we have been doing. So, league structures proving to be administrative heavily for clubs, referees and even us. Mark and Caitlin are dealing with a lot, a lot of emails and questions and, you know, administering your payouts, all that kind of stuff. League play has limited our number of ECI teams that can participate in our programming just because of the increased administrative needs and demands. I guess we underestimated the capacity. These are entry level teams and, you know, a lot of them are getting their toe wet. And, you know, we understand that this is a lot. It's a big, big bite to take. A lot of, a large number of pods have expressed concerns surrounding the execution of league play matches for different reasons. Venues, travel, things along that line. It's, it's going great in some pods, not so great in other pods. The increased scheduling and collaboration between clubs to run leagues has required OVA staff to intervene and sometimes even mediate solutions which, you know, talks to the administratively heavy fallout this has created. And we just wanted to let everybody know that we'll continue to monitor what's going on and make adjustments as required by the provincial government and the public health units, especially with this little rise that we are seeing right now and in our cases, so. That's what we're, we're dealing with right now, so moving forward. This is, you know, what we want to see, so. We want to kind of solve our facility problem, so what we did, we revisited the competition calendar and we tried to see what would work with moving to a convention center model. So, this is a chart that kind of outlines each of our divisions. The new calendar date that we are implementing for January. What it was originally, as you can see, one of our main goals or main objectives when creating this new programming was to try to disrupt the calendar as least as possible. So, if you were scheduled to play on a weekend, then you would play on that weekend. Their new format for January, so what they, what we have planned for them. So, as you can see, we're going to try to move our four v four and six v six age divisions to one day tournaments. And then move our TNS to 16U to convention style, larger event. And we also pushed back that registration date for everybody. Just because we know decisions need to be made and we need to kind of account for that. But we also need to run events, so it's, that deadline is super important for us as well. So, and yeah, this is our solution that we came up with to try to to deal with the lack of facilities that we're having here, so. From here, I believe I will hand it off to Mark and he will touch base about the model for our traditional and specialized 16U coming up.
Thank you, Carrie. Yeah, so as you can imagine, there was a lot of different ideas flowing around and coming up with different possible solutions and what would actually work and not work. So, we were excited to see this was a possible feasible solution. And logistically, it could work when we found out these three different weekends were available at the two convention centers. So, as Carrie mentioned earlier, the, the lack of venues is obviously the, the big, big missing piece to our puzzle right now. And we just can't keep waiting and waiting and hoping and hoping that stuff opens up and then too late to run anything in January. So, that's why we kind of had to bite the bullet and just, and go ahead with it and based on the information that we currently had available to us. So, the plan is to essentially run four different waves over each weekend, so that would allow up to 144 teams to come through for a one day tournament. So, this would be, so there are 12 courts at the facility. So, we would be running our traditional nine on three or 12 on four tournaments at that facility. So, it would be the same schedule that you're used to, the traditional one day event. It's just in a different, a little bit of a different setting that you would typically see. And as you're probably all well aware, this, this is a massive travel commitment for a lot of teams, especially with the, the first two weekends being at the EY Center in Ottawa. So, we did take that into account with creating this 600 kilometer plus range. And that number was initially created because we look back at how we would typically schedule a normal, regular season. And a normal, a normal season, you, we would see Kitchener teams going to Ottawa and Ottawa teams going to Kitchener. Ottawa going to Niagara Falls and vice versa. And the odd times, we would have London going to Ottawa or Ottawa going to London. Come on those odd, yeah, the kind of the one, once in a while kind of scenarios. And we saw this as one of those once in a while scenarios where nothing's going as normal with the whole COVID situation. So, that's why we picked that 600 kilometers one way, because I think it was around 630-ish kilometers from London to Ottawa. And also just note about the teams playing up. So, we, across the board for all 2022 events, we just recently added in MRS, a waitlist event for every single event. So, for the foreseeable future, we, we do see unfortunately that we'll have to continue this kind of lottery system where we just randomly select underage teams based on the availability for that event. So, EY Center in Ottawa, so this is the first two weekends, January 9th being the Friday, so January 9th, or sorry, January 7th through 9th and January 14th through 16th. So, here's the little bit of an outline as mentioned with the four different time slots that you could be playing in. And it is important to note, so obviously, the Friday time slot, that's not as ideal in terms of missing school and potentially if we sent, let's say, a London team to be in that Friday time slot, that would most likely cause a Thursday afternoon missing of a workday as well. So, we are putting a higher emphasis on scheduling more local teams on that Friday. At least not in the west side of the GTA, trying to schedule them for more of the Saturday or Sunday. So, that's definitely being taken into account as well. So, team splits, as you know, we did originally have a number of deadlines on November 28th and December 5th. But we did bump those back to December 12th just to give a bit of a time, a little bit of time for your teams and clubs to digest this information and to see if it's something that your teams were interested in. Now, the only caveat there is we do have 12 different age deadlines all on December 12th. So, Caitlin and I will be working as hard as we can that next week and pumping those team splits out as fast as we can. But yeah, it will take, for some of the age groups, it might take a few, a few more days, but we'll be getting those out as fast as we can. So, this is in that, this last paragraph at the bottom, this is just some of the kind of like the exemptions that we made for the teams that are 600 kilometers away, because we do realize that is, that is a very, very long trip to make for a one day tournament. So, if you are 600 plus kilometers away, you will only be required to play in one event in order to qualify for the interior championships. And that's compared to your normal two events that you typically need to qualify. And the question did come up, I got an email earlier today and asking if league play that you're currently in right now counts? And yes, that does count as an event. We see that as a normal event. It's just happened to be taking place over a few weeks instead of one day. And also, yeah, and in terms of the, sorry, the promotion relegation. This wouldn't play a factor for the 14U's just because that will be the first real event for the season for the TNS. But for the 15U age group, because we'll be taking your results from league play right now and then creating, we're not quite sure the exact breakdown yet, depends on the registration numbers, but most likely a premier select championship and trillium. And we will try our best to keep you in the spot that you should be in going into the third event, which would be the McGregor Cup, especially if you are that 600 plus kilometers away. And just some notes about EY Center. So, absolutely no buffet food setups. This is pretty common amongst all the one day terms that we have been able to run so far. So, for the 17U and 18U teams, if you're involved with any of those groups, you'll, they'll be very familiar with you, to you. No, no buffets, some venues even no food at all, but this one, at least we are able to bring in a bagged lunch option. So, just food for yourself and not to share. There will be a couple of concession stands open and this is a big one, as I know a lot of people have. It has been challenging with some of the venues that we're at and unfortunately, we do have capacities that we must abide by in order to secure the permit in the first place. But luckily, the spectator or the overall capacity for EY Center, they do have a capacity, I forget the exact number, but we wouldn't know where, get anywhere close to that capacity. So, it is unlimited spectators, so that will be nice for the parents and friends and family that are driving in with athletes. There will be a daily health screening and contact tracing required for all participants. We do not have the exact logistics around this yet, but we'll be posting that on the upcoming tournaments page on the OVA website next year. Team splits in the near future. And proof of full vaccination and identification is required for all spectators 12 plus, coaches, team personnel and officials. Athletes under 18 do not need to show proof of vaccination. And it's important to note, this is as of right now, these are the rules and as everyone's probably well aware, these rules change from time to time, so. We just want to make a little caveat there that that is the current regulations that are sent to us. Spectator and vaccination requirements may, oh yeah, sorry, just mentioned that, how it may change over time. And Scotiabank Convention Center in Niagara Falls, so this one will be on January 28th through 30th. And it, I think Carrie mentioned this a little bit earlier, how it was nice that we could, for the most part, keep all the ages to the same weekends that they were originally scheduled for, and that was definitely a big part in the reasoning why we did schedule the certain age groups to those weekends. For example, we did get a couple of questions, well, couldn't we do this more of a regional approach? So, TNS teams, let's have like a TNS event at Niagara Falls on January 28th to 30th. But then that would not allow us to do the team splits for the TNS third event, the McGregor Cup, which is supposed to be that very next weekend on February 5th. So, there is definitely some of those logistics to think of, so that's why we went with the all on the same weekend that you currently were scheduled to play on. And it, this one was one of the ones where six new boys originally scheduled to play on January 22nd, I believe, and that one just got bumped back one week further. So, same time timelines that we just went over with the EY Center, the four time slots and you'll be assigned to one of those. And same thing with the Friday time slot. There will be obviously more teams that are within a closer range to the convention center that we can choose from, but we'll definitely be targeting more of the local teams to have that Friday time slot. And same thing, team splits. This one, the girls are a little bit later deadline, December 19th. And the boys are December 12th, but the, our number one priority will be getting out the team splits for the first two weekends. So, these will be coming out a little bit later, once we, Caitlin and I can get the EY Center splits out. And the travel same, the same blurb here that we just talked about EY Center, so we don't need to go over that again. And a couple just pieces of information for Scotiabank, same thing with the capacity. Luckily, we will not touch, we won't get anywhere close to that 5,000 person limit. So, we can easily go with the phrase of unlimited spectators. So, same thing as EY, friends, family, anyone can attend. And proof of double vaccination for anyone 12 plus. We just, that was a couple of days ago, because originally, it was going to be only spectators, but we just found out that the Niagara Health region will be going with everyone 12 plus. We will be giving wristbands or hand stamp, sorry, I forgot to mention this. This will be the same for EY Center as well, just to help speed up the entry and exit, especially when you're, if you're going to your car midday or something. Just to let the security know that you've already shown proof of vaccination and daily health screen. Same as EY Center, no buffet setups in the venue. You are allowed bag lunches and there will be a concession stand as well for event participants. And something cool to know about Scotiabank Center, I didn't realize this at first, but it is literally right on the falls. Like it's, you got the street and then right down the way Niagara Falls, so it is a pretty cool location for a venue. And four on four, six on six rally ball and 17U and 18U age groups. So, fortunately with the convention center structure for the TNS and 15U and 16U age groups, that allowed us to utilize the, the few venues that we did have access to to have regular one day tournaments for the remaining age groups as well. So, it did work out really nice that based on this January plan, everyone should be able to get in a one day tournament. So, here we did have to move one age group, four on four, or sorry, TNS, or sorry, four on four rally ball girls was originally for January 22nd and that moved to the January 29th to 30th weekend. But other than that, everything is the same. And I'm sure you've seen this, especially in the 17U and 18U tournaments that we've already held in November and December, where you're not scheduled just for one day and you're going to play on that one day. You, you register for the weekend and then just based on venue availability, you'll either play on the Saturday or Sunday. I know that's definitely not ideal for everyone, because you, you might be busy one or the other days, but just based with this venue shortage, it's, it's really our only option to, to make the numbers work. So, the best, I know it's not the most ideal situation, but try and keep both dates open, because unfortunately, you won't know which date you're playing on until roughly three weeks, three to four weeks before the actual event. And there's no change to the 17 and 18U boys McGregor Cup, so the tournament model is the same that we've currently been doing for the provincial and challenge cups. And hotel booking, so in order to assist teams with travel and accommodations, Hudson Travel Group has secured hotel bookings over the two weekends in Ottawa and the last weekend in Niagara. HTG has helped secure the lowest possible rates in these cities to book. Booking links will be published the week of December 12th. So, basically, as your team splits are posted, you'll be seeing these links pop up next to the team splits with the information. Now, it is important to note that teams are not required to use HTG. It's not like a stay and play policy where it's absolutely 100% mandatory. But this service does assist in subsidizing the event to make it feasible for the association. February, so obviously still a lot of unknowns at this point, but I guess you can, you can hope at this point, just because we do have a little bit more time for February, so it's not at the, we're not at the point where we have to make that game time decision right now. We are kind of keeping options open, but we are at this point planning for February and March, everyone's in their one day tournaments, assuming more school boards do open up. We've definitely been hearing rumors of school boards opening up and slowly, surely, and we are getting a few more venues. And we will be keeping a very close eye on the situation, obviously, over the next few weeks. And which will ultimately decide if we have to go with a different approach for February and March. But as of right now, that is the plan. And just to kind of give you a snapshot. So, based on February and March venues that we currently have booked, we are 48 venues short for February and 58 short for March. So, we are a long ways to go, so we're definitely banking on the school boards opening up. So, that's just to give you a little bit of an idea. And that, those numbers are also based on no playing up as well. So, that's like the bare minimum we're talking about here. So, we do, we definitely have lots of, a lot of work to go for in January, or sorry, in February and March. So, if you do have venues or access to venues, please send myself an email with dates that you're available to host, because as of right now, basically, any single date that you have available in February, March, we will accept and you'll be able to host. So, we do have a lot of hosting information on our website under club resources. So, take a look at that. If you have any questions, if you have any additional questions, feel free to give myself an email and I'll try and answer them for you. And LP, I'm going to actually pass this off to LP, who will talk a little bit about the volleyball Canada jump off that we'll be having at these convention center events.
Before we hop over to LP, we're actually, oh, LP, do you want to go now and I'll do questions after?
Yeah, I'm here. I can go right now, Caitlin. It'll take a minute. Good evening, everybody. So, I just wanted to talk briefly about this school opportunity for young athletes that will be happening in conjunction with, with these events in Ottawa and Niagara in January. So, just so that there is a little bit of value added to, to the players that will attend those events. So, I don't know if you're familiar with it or not, but Volleyball Canada recently launched a combine that they are in the process of, of running across the country. And a, another kind of level of the, of the combine, which is quite complex and which needs to be its own event, is what they've called the Volleyball Canada Jump Off, which is an opportunity for young athletes to, to get physical tested done. There's a few tests involved, such as a height, wingspan, one hand reach, block jump and spike touch. And, and the cool thing with that is that it allows athletes to enter their results into a national database. And then compare themselves to other kids their age from across the country. So, they have access to this, this information and they can see kind of how to compare to that. So, it can be a motivator for those athletes in terms of, of training and getting their game to the next level. And so, we will be running these, this testing on behalf of Volleyball Canada at the two weekends in Ottawa and the one in Niagara. An added thing here is that if athletes want to use these, this testing essentially to, to know where they're at, in order to apply for Team Ontario, they will be able to use these results as part of their Team Ontario application. So, that's a bonus for sure for those athletes who may not have those numbers on hand. And so, yeah, so that's going to be fun. Every athlete participating will get a, we'll leave it with a t-shirt from, from the VC Jump Off. And we're hoping to, to make that fun. It will fit. We looked at the schedule. We all have a space. And we'll make sure that it doesn't impede on any of the playing that happens. Athletes will have to register individually on MRS. The, the links will be part of, I believe, an email that we'll send out tomorrow. And so, all the information will be there for parents and athletes to, to sign up for, for this. So, that's that. And the last thing I'm going to say while I have the mic here is that today we have launched our Team Ontario identification process. So, if you want to pass on that message to your coaches, you know, clubs, parents, athletes who may be interested, as of today, they can sign up in game time and create their profile and start gathering the information they need to apply to be selected for a 2022 Team Ontario program. And as, in a second, I'm going to post the link to the registration in the chat so that you can have it and share it with who, who you think it should, it should be shared about. Okay, so that's my little blurb. Pretty excited to add on to these great events that our youth comp staff is going to put together. And look forward to see you there.
Thanks, LP. Before you go, we do have one question that did come in for you specifically. If an athlete had already attended one of the combine events, do they need to do this again?
No, so, so really like, you don't need to do this. This is really a thing where if you want to do it, you can. If you've already done the Volleyball Canada Combine, then you already have your results. The only thing you may want to do is, because you did it in November and you're going to do it again, let's say, at the end of January, you may want to see if you've improved because you've been training. Then you may want to just sign up so that you get, you know, new numbers for those specific tests. But in terms of, of, yeah, meaning to do it, it's, there's no need. I personally, I think that, you know, if I look back at when I was a young athlete, it would have been awesome for me to, to know how I compared to other, you know, players from across the country that I don't even know exist. You know, so, so that, I think that's a fun thing. And, and everyone, by the way, when this, the way they are going to access this database is they will have their data input into an app called Kinduck that is used by the national teams in Volleyball Canada. And that's where they will be able to see their results and also kind of the averages and, and the best scores for their, for their age from across Canada. So, yeah.
Awesome. Thank you very much, LP. And now, I think that's it for us, so we're just going to go through some of the questions that came through the chat. If everybody has any other questions, feel free to put it in and I'll ask the youth comp team. So, we're going to start off, for the teams that are 600 kilometers away, will the teams be playing on Saturday?
So, our goal will definitely be like for sure avoiding Friday. Saturday is the ideal, but at this point, just with so many moving parts, we can't guarantee Saturday versus Sunday. But all we can say at this point right now is for sure not the Friday for those 600 plus teams. But yeah, we're definitely keep that in mind, because we do know the Saturday. Probably that Saturday PM way would be the most ideal scenario in terms of avoiding any other potential school or, yeah, missing work in School or, yeah, missing work, anything like that.
Could a team in theory play six on six as well as TNS tournaments that are on the same weekend? The answer is yes. You technically could. Um, that being said, you will just. Have to roll the dice because it's a lot of teams to look at for. Trying to schedule everybody. So we will, you can take that in consideration and register, but it will be rolling a dice. Because I'm not gonna have time to really schedule your team on Saturday and potentially not for six on six. So. Technically, yes. Um, one question that came up, sixteen U girls is playing January twenty eighth to the thirtieth, which is exam time. Girls will have exams on the Friday that they're supposed to play. What happens if the team can't make the Friday work because of exams?
So we are gonna take that kind of case by case, because I, the, well, the first strategy is having that wave start at two PM. So at least that would allow for kids to do an exam in the morning. And then also, if they happen to have an exam later in the afternoon. They would potentially have the chance to just reach out to the teacher, can I write this exam the day before, evening before? So definitely some. Massaging can happen there. So if there is like that worst case scenario where nothing can be moved, well, then we would take that as a case by case. Um, and then, sorry, that last point of, um, trying to schedule more local teams on that Friday would at least help. Prevent the kids from having to leave or basically take off the entire school day on Friday. So kind of those three combinations, we're hoping should capture, uh, most of the issues. But yeah, we do realize that. Realistically, there might be some case by case scenarios that we have to work through.
Will the OVA still reimburse the forty-four cents per kilometer for the teams that are six hundred plus kilometers away? Like they're doing for Ontario Championships in April?
No. So that would be, that is only a Ontario championship, uh, policy. So the way we're treating this is just like, uh, we would any regular season in that Caitlin and I keep track of travel. And we essentially, uh, promote and like tell people that you can expect to do one four hundred plus kilometer one-way trip a year. And we often take turns. So a lot of times we pulled kitchen, uh, like, let's say a Kitchener team to go to Ottawa, because we've already pulled. An Oshawa, Toronto, and there wasn't any other really options. So we do take turns with that. And so it's just. Unfortunately, with the size of the province, um, it does come down to rep viable. Every team can expect to do one big trip. Uh, in a year, and that's kind of the mindset that we had.
Yeah. And another component to that, as well as with Ontario Championships, your event registration fee covers. Funding going into the travel refund pot, whereas we are charging the regular season Challenge Cup tournament fees for this event. So there is no pot of money to use for a travel fund.
If the convention center model continues past January, will the locations remain in Ottawa and Niagara? Or will they move to the GTA or Waterloo or other regions?
Well, we're really limited on our convention center inventory in Ontario. And, um, for the number of courts we can fit in, in, in different, um, areas of the province. Um, you know, we do have budgeting restrictions as well, um, that we have to look at. Um, so we are definitely open, um, to looking at different places. Um, however. You know, the couple of variables have to be there. The availability of a weekend budget. And, and sizing with limited restrictions on union pricing and, and all that other good stuff. We're definitely open. If anybody knows of anything that's available, uh, let us know that we might not know of, but.
Yeah, we've already been in contact with all the major convention centers in Toronto and reached out to Rine Park and Waterloo. They have zero availability until the end of March. Um, and then Carrie touched on the Toronto facilities, um, with the lack of Toronto tourism funding, because they are no longer in existence. Um, it makes it very, very difficult to even step foot into that building right now, uh, outside of an Ontario Championships here. So most likely you'd still be looking at an Ottawa, um, and Niagara if we can get additional dates.
Um, for clubs with multiple TNS teams that will be in, that will make an effort. To go to Ottawa, will they be able to schedule them all on the same day? We can definitely take a look at this. I can make a note if you send me an email. Um, but like most of the requests that come in, I can't promise anything will be for certain, but I can definitely keep them into, um. On a note to, yeah, try and make that work. Um, will teams traveling far distance be given times on Saturday?
Yes. Oh, yeah, we already touched on that. It's really important that this is gonna be a huge scheduling puzzle for us as well. Um, so we are going to make every accommodation to try to make this. Uh, happen for everybody as smoothly and easily as possible, but ultimately it will come down to, uh, a numbers game and, um, what fits and. I know Mark and Caitlin do an amazing job trying to, uh, can, you know, taking into everybody's considerations, whether it's distance, exams, et cetera. So.
Thanks, Christopher. Um, what will the cancellation policy be due to weather?
So that would be the same as our current policy. Um, so if at any point in time. Uh, the day leading up to the event, so let's say you play on Friday, on Thursday. If your team does not feel comfortable driving, there's no, um, questions. Well, unless it's a beautiful sunny day, we may question it. But we are very, very flexible on that and it's, there's like never questions asked if you. Because we don't want to put you or your team in a situation that you do not feel comfortable driving. So it would be the same process as always, and that you just reach out to Caitlin or myself, depending on the age of your team. And we will process a one hundred percent refund for your team.
Um, so how will the dates that are changed right now for January events, how will they affect February if at all?
So they will not affect February, um, at our worst keeping. And that's what was one of our big goals for January. Uh, is to basically schedule January. That did not require blowing up the calendar for February and March. So luckily, everything can still happen February, March as planned.
Okay, so in regards to registrations, if a club has already registered, registered for tournaments that have changed dates. Is there anything that teams need to do in MRS?
No, no, there's nothing. But, uh, just keep a note, we are also flexible that since we did change the date on you fairly last minute. That if that absolutely does not work for your team, again, just let us know and, and we can pull you out of the event. But other than that, if you're registered, you don't need to do any, anything to change it.
Can a team that has already registered back out without a penalty of the tournament that is now. A different time and a different place?
Yeah, yeah. So whether you obviously weren't expecting to go Ottawa, you just found out about that. Uh, you can back out or same with the, the four on four rally ball girls or the six new boys with their date change as well.
Um, so something we didn't touch on, um, we just had a quick question about is contact tracing. So COVID protocols, how will contact tracing be handled? Will it just be by match or will it be by facility?
Do you want to touch on that one, Alicia?
Yeah, sure. Um, so there'll be the COVID safety plan, which we will get out that will highlight all of this information. Uh, specifically with Niagara, they are handling all of the contact tracing, proof of acts checks, all of that fun stuff. So they have a URL, uh, ahead of time that we will send out that everyone needs to fill out the day of. That will be checked upon arrival, getting in and out of the facility at the door. Um, so once again, like Mark touched on earlier, that we're doing the bracelet or the hand stamp, just to kind of have that ease of, um, going in and out of there. Um, and we're just still working through the logistics with EY Center for their contact tracing and daily health screening protocols. Um, but that will all be updated, uh, that will all be checked at the door as teams enter. Um, so stay tuned. We will get all that information out shortly.
Um, okay, so somebody has suggested Markham Panem Center that has seven courts. Or colleges and universities. Mark, do you want to just touch on those bad boys?
If they're available, great, because Markham Panem, we do have two weekends, um, there, but that's all, all we could get, uh, in the New York. So that's a very. Sun after venue for sure. And same with universities. Unfortunately, it's, they're still getting. Uh, we're, there's just a couple that we're able to get into, but a number of them are still delaying the process, giving the first priority to. Their varsity teams, which makes sense. Um, but it obviously is a really slow, because normally we do have. A, a number of dates at, uh, a bunch of different universities and colleges through Ontario and, and a lot of them are still. In that kind of holding pattern or just at this moment in time, giving priority to their own internal programs.
Yeah. And I think just to, you know, a heads up to everyone else, like the youth comp staff have looked at thousands of facilities across Ontario. From private schools to churches to rec centers, colleges, universities, this is what we have is what we've been able to get. Um, we keep trying, but, uh, you know, we're with like the other sports, we're fighting to get space and it's pretty much non-existent at this point in time. So we're trying.
And there's a huge, uh, expense and budget concern with these as well. Um. As you all know, private facilities aren't cheap, so, um, that's a, a big consideration for us as well.
Yeah, especially when ninety percent of our permits are typically, uh, schools. Uh, which obviously help bring down the cost of an average facility to match current team fees. And when we're only using private facilities, that definitely puts a little wrinkle in the, in the plan for sure.
Um, and just to touch on a question that came by, MRS isn't prepared for our ECI changes. Um, so any ECI will allow fluidity between the four on four to TNS. So if you are going to look up, for example, the six on six girls' challenge cup. It will be registered as a fourteen U event, but that's to allow the TNS teams to also have fluidity to play in that. It is a six on six event, so please just make sure you're looking at the title of the events for ECI as opposed to what the divisions are. Um, what does EY stand for?
Orison Young, I think, isn't it?
Yeah.
Like I had no idea.
Yeah. Um, okay, is it, is the two straight model for the morning matches going to stick around?
We will have to do that for the Saturday AM and PM, just with, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be tight to try and get all. What was I think, fourteen rounds in on that one day? But that is the one positive about, because obviously Saturday is the most ideal coveted day to be on. So that is the kind of side bonus, I guess consolation prize for being on Friday or Sunday. In that you will be able to have the two out of threes for round round, because you, we won't be as stressed for time.
Um, have we looked into revival film studios near Ash Bridges Bay? If not, we could write that down, just look at it.
I have not. I will definitely write that down.
Thank you to whoever suggested. We will take a look in there. Um, how many teams would you accept to play up? Is it first come, first served by registration or by lottery? And when would the teams be notified if they're picked to play?
So this will be a, it's all based on a registration number. So if we have space, we'll grab every underage team that we can possibly fit. It just all comes down to the, the space that we have available. And for regular season events, this is just a complete lottery. So. Um, if you're involved with seventeen U and eighteen U events, I just do the download list of the waitlist, pick a, a random number generator from Google. And, and then just match up that number with a line in Excel. So that same approach would be taken for, for these events. Um, and yeah, it really comes down to, we might be able to accept like seventy-five percent of the waitlist teams, or we might only be able to accept. Two or three. It, it all comes down to the registration numbers.
Considering there doesn't seem to be divisions, how is the OVA determining which teams will be playing one another and avoiding significant differences in caliber?
So for, I'll start that all this age group, so sixteen U and fifteen U. Uh, since those are outside of the early contact initiative age groups, this first league play that you've just been in right now. We are taking those results and we'll be using that for promotion to creating the different tiers. And it all depends on their numbers, but. Most likely there'll be a Trillium Championship Select and Premier for fifteen U and sixteen U. Since TNS is part of the early contact initiative, it was very important from, uh, the groups that we talked about when creating early contact. ECI in that it, it wasn't focused so much on winning, especially early on the season. And though obviously the one downside of that is that it does, the competitive balance does kind of waver a bit, especially early on the season. So with this fort, sorry, the TNS event. This one does matter. There will be points given out. There will be, um, promotion that happens after this event. But this current event will all be the same division. So everyone will be in championship for the boys and everyone will be in Trillium for the girls.
Can a TNS team play six on six volleyball for the Challenge Cup and use it as one of their events for traditional and specialized provincials? The answer to that is no. You need to play in a traditional and specialized event in order for that to qualify for the traditional and specialized, um, provincials. Have we thought about mobilizing parents or athletes to write to city councillors, MPs, et cetera, to see if we can get. The political will to open up spaces? Please do.
Yes, we, yes, please, everyone. Um, we have also written letters to the government, uh, urging, uh, you know, Steven Lache and. Ministry of Education to address this issue. It's gone up to our deputy ministers and all that fun stuff and we're not getting anywhere. So yes, I think, you know, mobilization, the more, um, vocal we are and the more parents and clubs and everyone is reaching out, the better.
And I believe this is our last question, unless everybody has anything else. For the six on six one day tournaments, will there still be local with the pods that they're currently been playing? So we'll be the same. The answer is no. We're gonna try to, um, mix it up just a little bit, but you still will be paying, playing in pod-like. Um, tournaments. You might see a couple, a handful of the same teams, but we want to get a variety for everybody. Um, for TNS in Ottawa, Jan fourteen to sixteen, is this event three allowing specialization or is it still number two? I have had this question a lot, um, and it was a little confusing for some. So. We took out the December event, which is event number two. So January will continue with events number three. So there is a lot, we are allowing specialization, just not full specialization. It's partial. Of course, when I said it was the last question, a whole bunch came in, so this is good. How will fifteen U, sixteen U teams who did not do league play be ranked for January?
So we would take a look at their preseason ranking and if possible, we will be able to get them in based on that preseason rank. But obviously, it's, it, again, it, it sounded like a broken record. It's all a numbers game. So it, it comes down to numbers and because when we state, like, let's say, first place goes up, second place, the whole promotion thing. There might not be any vacancies left. So then we wouldn't necessarily be able to put them into where they would be, but maybe if you get them in one lower instead of two lower. Kind of thing. So we definitely try our best to make them fit where they should from a competitive balance standpoint.
MRS club question, maybe this is something we jot down for the future. Will we be ever, will we ever have the chance to register for multiple events at once?
It's been on my wishlist for years. It is already on the list and Jen knows about it and I bug her about it every season. So, yeah.
Perfect.
I will make it happen.
Awesome. So that is all of the questions that we have. Um, if you have any more questions or you think of ones later, uh, feel free to email any of us. We will make sure that that's answered right away. We will also be doing, um, an FAQ with all of these questions. Uh, they'll be posted tomorrow, hopefully. Um, and also those, this recording will also be posted on our YouTube page, I believe, on our website. Now, so thank you for your continued patience as we all work together through this pandemic. We look forward to being back on the court in a tournament format for all age divisions in January. Thanks, everyone.
I want to do one more thank you shout out, actually a few. Um, thank you to the IBDC members, regional executives and regional council and presidents for providing feedback to work through this plan with us. And bring up points, you know, to change and address and make it work. So thank you, everyone, once again, for working with the staff to, uh, make this happen.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, don't forget, AGM is on Sunday.
You need to register by Thursday.
Register by Thursday.
Thanks, everybody. Stay safe, be healthy.